Good evening. I'd like to call the order of the Planning Commission meeting for Monday, July twenty-second, two thousand and twenty-four. Roll call.
Chairperson Smith?
Here.
Commissioner Pogacznik?
Here.
Commissioner Patrangelo?
Here.
Commissioner Correios?
Here.
Let the record also show that ex-official Pat Green and Tina Glatter in attendance, as well as Community Development Director Betsy Olivanti. Approval of minutes. Approval of the Planning Commission minutes for May thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-four. No corrections, additions, or deletions, if any.
I would so move. I'll second.
Motion's been moved in second. Any discussion? Seeing not all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries. Acceptance of the agenda. Acceptance of the agenda for recording purposes. Note any additions, deletions, or changes, if any.
So approved.
I'll second it. I'll second it. Motion's been moved in second. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. New business. Convene the public hearing scheduled for this time to consider the interim use permit request of James Blight, one-one-two-eight-nine Spudville Road, Hibbing, Minnesota, five-five-seven-four-six, to allow for the operation of a home business in the AR, agriculture rural residential district and the Hibbing City Quote of Ordinances, which is permitted only with an interim use permit on the subject property, one-one-two-eight-nine Spudville Road, Hibbing, Minnesota, five-five-seven-four-six. Staff report.
The applicant is requesting an interim use permit for a home business, which would be a temporary operation of an auto repair business. The operation would take place in an existing accessory structure. A home business is a commercial or minor industrial business conducted on which the owner's home is situated. A home business may employ up to five people and shall operate under conditions that will not be a nuisance or be incompatible with the surrounding area. For conditions, I put none currently. One may, you know, you'll be asking questions. When they put down temporary, you'd want to know how long. Interim use permits are a certain time period anyway that you have to put, but you'll get that information. That's it. Thank you.
Okay. Uh, do we have the applicant in the audience, please? Can you come to the podium and state your name and record for the... For the record, please?
James Blight.
Address, too.
What was that?
Name and address.
One-one-two-eight-nine Spudville Road.
Okay, can you kind of explain to us here what your plans are and what you're doing with this?
I operate a small auto repair business. I didn't know I needed the permit. Once I found out, I approached and there I am. Uh, no more than two cars at a time. And, uh, I'm only a couple of months away from securing financing.
Can you speak more to the mic? Could you speak a little bit? Can you speak a little more into the mic? He was having trouble hearing you.
Might have to move that mic a little bit.
Sorry, guys.
Don't break it.
Do you want me to repeat what I said?
Yes, please.
I operate a small auto repair business from my home shop. I didn't know I needed a permit. Once I found out, I applied for it. Uh, no more than two cars at a time, and I'm only a couple of months away from securing financing.
Can I?
Securing financing?
No, I'm asking a question. You only have like two cars at a time, you're saying? Are you looking to hire more people?
No.
No, just going to be you then?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And a question is, like they had asked about, you're saying temporary. What do you mean by temporary? Uh, as far as, because like you said, the condition whose permit can only be for so long, and then you have to come back to us again if you didn't go to a commercial building or some...
Well, I'm a couple of months away. I don't know if you guys have set terms or how that works, but I really only need ninety days.
Okay, but what we're saying is, is that you're saying it's a temporary, this is a temporary spot? So eventually, you're going to try to find something different?
Yes, I'm working with the bank, trying to secure financing, and I'm really close.
Well, I mean, I understand a home business. I mean, I've started a home business that had to go commercial eventually. But I do understand that part, like everybody else, you know, you gotta build it up a little bit before you do jump into it, so.
That's both the only thing I have to ask them.
I guess, uh, my only thought for the commissioners here would be, what are we thinking as far as a timeline? I know that being in business, sometimes things happen. We're thinking like six months, a year out.
You're looking right now, you said just a few months away from financing to have a building somewhere else?
Yes.
So if we give you like six months?
That's more than enough.
More than enough, you figure that would give you a little extra leeway there in case you need, you know, a little, make a little adjustment or something?
Would that be enough time, you think?
Absolutely.
Okay, yeah, we just don't want you to be rushed. I mean, you know, obviously, you're gonna do it, but, uh, you know, don't want to be putting the chains, you know?
Right.
Any other questions?
Oh, you answered all mine.
Okay, perfect. Good then. Awesome.
Thank you very much.
Is there anybody else in the audience that would like to speak for or against us? If so, please come to the podium there and speak your name and address for the record, please.
I am Terry Pogarals, my wife Carol Pogarals. We reside at one-one-two-nine-seven Spudville Road. Next door neighbors to the Blights. And also with us are Reagan Joanne Booth. They reside at one-one-two-five-seven Spudville Road. Neighbors two doors down. We've resided at our current location for the past forty-nine years. And we paid our property taxes the entire time. It's a nice rural setting, and it was peaceful and quiet. We have been notified in the mail that Mr. Blight wants to obtain an interim use permit to start a home business, his auto repair shop. Uh, the Blights moved next door about eight, eight years ago, and we introduced ourselves. At that time, one of his relatives has cautioned us that he's a junk collector. So if he starts, you better nip it in the bud. Well, he started a auto repair shop about eight years ago. And sure enough, the junk started piling up. Old cars, boats, metal, garbage of all kinds, uh, started piling up in his front yard, side yard, and backyard, even encroaching upon the wetlands in his backyard. We approached Mr. Blight with our concerns regarding his garbage, and our discussion was living next door to a junkyard. His reply to us was, well, there's a junkyard at the end of the road, referring to radco iron and scrap metal. But I told him, we don't live next to that junkyard. We live next to his junkyard. Well, after that initial meeting, he made no effort to clean up any of his mess. So we contacted the city and asked them to invite their Blight ordinances. An officer did come out, and I assume he ordered Mr. Blight to start cleaning up something, because there was a little improvement there. But as time passed again, he kept working on his site out of his garage auto repair shop many years ago, and the garbage started to accumulate again. Then we noticed in the paper that there was a public notice. A lot of Blight properties were listed in the paper, having a special Blight assessment lodged against it. And sure enough, on the listing was the property of Mr. Blight. So I know he's got the special assessment against his property. Has been going on, I imagine, for a number of years. Mr. Blight has no regard for his neighbor's well-being, in my opinion. No property owner wants to live next to a Blight property or even a small-time commercial garage. I'm sure each one of you would feel the same as we do if this had happened to you. Uh, this has been going on for many years, and we've made attempts. He hasn't changed his ways. Now, our main concern right now is this interim use permit. Again, we heard you, it's temporary. Two months, six months, six years, eight years?
We make that decision.
Well, I've lived this decision. So it's been going on for a long time, barring any involvement with the city here. So again, if he's allowed to expand his home business, again, the junk is gonna keep on collecting. It's gonna be a detriment to our next-door property and our neighbors' properties. So I want to know, yeah, can you guarantee that our property values will not be impacted? I don't think you can. This is the reason why we're objecting to Mr. Blight's request. This has been ongoing for years, and actually, we're disgusted with his actions so far. I do have a sign petition with some of his closest neighbors. If I could submit that to the zoning commission, and that's about all I have to say.
Any questions?
Okay. I have a question.
The commissioner has a question for you, sir.
You can hand that to Pat.
Hand that to Pat.
Pat, in the world.
Oh, you know you're not gonna get that back.
It does become a public record.
Yes, right. I guess there's a couple of questions that I have.
Sure.
First of all, Mr. Green, has, have you ever had any, uh, problems with, uh, Mr. Blight over here? I mean, have you ever had any of the officers or any, are you personally any of yours that you were the...
Well, the Blight officers would go on.
They got involved.
Junk and that.
Sergeant Fredericks, Frederiksen?
What's the name?
Sergeant Fredericks or Frederiksen?
Could be. I mean, it's under the police department.
It was a while ago.
And, uh, so as, but as far as operating a home business, I don't think I've ever had a call our department.
Well, as far as the home business goes, the only complaint we have, I don't want to live next to a junkyard.
Was the junk, okay.
Was the junk.
No, I, I never got a call on junk vehicles.
And have, do you, do you know, have any of the, um, the officer of those, the two people that we have going around looking for Blight and whatever? Have, do you know if they've ever went out there? You don't know that then, Pat?
I will.
Okay. And if this has been going on for, you're saying, seven or eight years?
Yep.
Okay, have you ever complained up until this time, or has it been, you've did it of...
Well, I complained once to the Blight officer. That's all I had to do. I expressed my concerns to them, and they came and addressed it.
Okay, they came and addressed it, is what you're saying. How long ago was that? About a year or so, you said?
Uh, maybe seven years ago.
Well, the Blight officers weren't...
Yeah.
They've only been here three.
They've only been here three years.
I don't know what Blight officers you have, but...
Well, we do, you do call the police department.
I call the police department.
We do have Blight officers, and at that time, Mr. Green was in charge of it.
Well, it wasn't Mr. Green at that time, no.
Okay, that's why I asked if he was ever involved in, and he says no. So, but maybe the police thought they were taking care of it. I don't know, but...
So before, before the Blight, uh, the PD handled Blight.
Right.
Normally junk, I'm garbage junk. As far as...
Old cars.
And back then, seven years ago, the police department, when I'd get a complaint on tony junk vehicles, you know, I would give that to the police department, uh, because they could run, has to be licensed and operable.
Correct.
So they could run, they would run the plates, and they would handle that like a ticket.
Right.
And we would handle the garbage and junk in the yard.
Yeah.
That one vehicle. So that's probably what, seven years ago?
Well, in that case...
Went out there.
Well, in that case, we just bypassed the middleman and went right to the enforcer.
Well, which is fine, yeah, I mean, but...
But again, it's been ongoing for years. No regard for our concerns, so...
And we didn't know, we didn't know it was a business if I don't get a call or a complaint, you know, somebody's operating...
As far as the business goes, yeah, our only complaint is...
Right.
Is the garbage.
Yep.
And, yeah, it's two cars at a time, I wish.
The interim use, he's, uh, the applicant said, you know, ninety days. Or, uh, one of the commissioners suggested to him, they haven't voted on this yet, six months. So that interim use is standing, and after six months, he cannot operate the business. Junk vehicles would still be police department if that, you know?
Well, that's what I'm gonna ask. Well, that's the question I'm asking, is that if he does get this interim to use it, is that, I guess we're gonna have to talk to him about, is that gonna get, is that gonna change as far as what's there? Or are you gonna add anything there? That's, we'll, we'll try to work that out, you know?
Well, the question I have to ask is, who's going to enforce it?
That would be the, our department.
That's my concern.
City attorney. Yeah, it's a, it's a binding contract, a conditional use or an interim. So the city attorney and even court, if somebody doesn't stop after their time limit.
Mr. Green, I have a question for you then. Okay, if we approve this, can we put a condition on there about moving? Some, I mean, I don't know what's there, but can we make a condition or not?
If you put six months, that means that the end of six months, the home business is null and void. If there are a lot of people without a business, well, pile up junk vehicles.
Right.
And that's still a complaint issue, but the actual business, you could put a condition no more than, uh... He says he has no more than two cars to work on, but he could have no more than three or four cars for parts. You know, that kind of condition for the actual business for six months.
That's what I was asking. If we can make a condition on, I mean, all four of us, if we can make a condition that, that would be, and then, once he does move the business, then we have, then he has to go through the police department or through the...
If vehicles keep piling up.
Vehicles are still there. You know, we're trying to help both of you out.
Well, well, he has to be...
You know, we're, we're looking at both sides of the issue here.
Well, I imagine...
Somebody wants to do a business, which I guess he's been doing, but if he's gonna move, you know, we don't want him to leave or haul stuff there. You know, that's what I, would be my concern.
Okay.
Is that he, if he has this business.
Okay, well...
But that has to be between all of us.
In the past week or two, he has made an effort to clean up some of the mess. So I have to give him that much credit.
Okay, so I mean, he's trying...
It must be in preparation of the, uh, your inspection?
Well, yeah, I mean, Pat would have to, or us, uh, Pat would have to take care of the, you know, there's officers that we, that the city does employ that would go out there, and they could, like he says, if it's not operable, doesn't have license on it, if it's too much, you know, Blight.
Well, no, it's, it has dropped drastically.
Well, okay, oh, so you gotta be happy about that. I mean, I mean, obviously, we, we don't want...
After eight years, I am happy.
Well...
So, that's really about all I have to say.
Okay.
So I just wanted to express my concern, so...
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else in the audience who would like to speak for or against this? Do you have any more questions?
Yes. You know, I think we should get back up there. Yeah, I think we gotta get them back up there.
I'll go first. I was out by the property there, and I didn't actually walk around on the property, but, um, my recollection, there was only three, four vehicles in the yard. And you have three garages, and I didn't see a lot of stuff laying around, like you say. I didn't walk in the woods to see if there was stuff packed in the woods and stuff.
Nope.
But, I mean, the front yard looked very clean to me and stuff, and so basically, what you're saying is usually a couple of vehicles at a time, you get them repaired, and then they're out of there?
Yes.
So you don't, you're not building up a whole bunch of vehicles at a time?
No, I have my own personal vehicles that are kept, and then I usually have two customer cars at a time.
At the max.
And I've only been operating for a year and a half. Um, before that, I was working on my personal stuff. I also dealt with, there was Sergeant Rancetti who came out when the complaint was filed, and I met all the criteria for my property being in compliance. When he came out again, I was already in compliance. And then last week, I called the community officer to come and make sure I was in compliance also.
So you've been communicating with them active?
Absolutely.
The question I have to ask is, um, Mr. Pogarals, there said you've been doing this for over eight years? Is that right or not?
This is what I do, working as a business or not. I'm a mechanic. I work on my own vehicles. I have a project vehicle, but it's just what I do.
Okay, but as far as, like, they're not cars that you purchase and you're using them for parts or that type of thing?
No.
Okay, I mean, you know, people do that, you know, to use.
I, I do have one truck that I haven't decided whether I want to use it for parts or just get rid of it.
Okay.
But that's not a normal thing, no.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else in the audience who would like to speak for or against this? Hearing none, I'll close the public hearing at this time. Any comments from any of the commissioners first?
I would, I would just like to make a motion, but I would also like to put a condition on it.
Yeah, we need, we need to talk about it.
That's what I mean, but I mean, everybody else, you know, you know what mine is, you know?
Yeah.
Is that, but, and if you guys have anything else that you think...
Well, like, I'm thinking six months, give them a little time, just in case, you know? I think that's not a very long...
No.
Time. We don't want them back here every two months or something, so...
Right, but we want to make sure that this gets done immediately.
Yeah.
I, I would go with six months, Gordon.
And then, four vehicles max?
Yeah, I, I would say that for sure. You know, because I mean, you know, and we can't count his vehicles.
Correct.
You know, his own vehicles, so that's, those are the conditions I would ask.
That at the, at that time, then, if, uh, if the problem persisted, then they would, the neighbors would be able to go through other channels?
Well, I mean, it's a conditional use permit, so he's gonna have the six months.
He's gonna have...
You're gonna have the six months, then he might, if for some reason it doesn't work out, then we can say, well, we've had problems with this already, and we would not give him another one. Yeah, we wouldn't extend it.
All right.
So I would make a motion to approve with the conditions.
John?
Yes.
You need to do the findings and facts.
Oh, findings and facts.
Okay, number one, the proposed building is specifically listed as a conditional or interim use in the regulations applicable to the district which it is located. And in this case, it would be interim use, and I would say yes, that's...
Yes. You're right.
Number two, that the proposed building or use at the particular location is necessary or desirable to provide convenience and will contribute to the general welfare of the neighborhood or community. Applicant's response was, I would be providing a service to my customers and the community.
This is where you kind of get it, so...
That's kind of a tough one, but, you know, because of obviously that, but I guess he would be providing a service.
Correct.
But with our conditions, there are gonna be some... We have to give the vote yes or no on it.
I would agree that this is, I mean, it's, yeah, it's, I mean, I was by the property, it didn't look bad to me. I mean, there wasn't a lot of stuff around, there was a few vehicles, but it wasn't like a big junkyard of vehicles and stuff there, so...
Okay.
Number three, that the proposed building or use will not have a substantial or undue adverse effect upon adjacent property, the character of the neighborhood, traffic conditions, utility facilities, and other matters affected, affecting the public health, safety, and general welfare. The applicant's response was, due to the small amount of vehicles and the size of the property, will not affect property owners.
That's what our condition is, and...
Yeah, our condition we put on there.
Our condition will take care of that. We have to vote yes on it.
And the neighbors aren't actually very close, they're fairly well-spread out out there, so it's not like you're in town and you're right next door. Number four, that the proposed building or use will be designed, arranged, and operated so as to permit development and use of neighboring property in accordance with the applicable district regulations. His response was, it's permitted with an IUP. And I would agree with that.
I would agree with that, too, yeah.
He has three garages, and there wasn't much outside, you know, a couple of vehicles, like I said, and stuff, so... So, one green room and all four of them.
I would make a motion to approve with conditions.
And the two conditions were the six months and no more than four vehicles.
And no more than four vehicles, yes.
If it's those conditions, I would second.
What's that?
If it's those conditions, then I second.
Okay, we got a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
No.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Hearing none, passes.
We have the conference meeting this Wednesday.
It's this Wednesday they have it? Okay. The, this will be before the city council Wednesday, so you should plan on being there also for that then. Okay, next, convene the public hearing scheduled for this time to review the purchase of real property by the Hibbing Economic Development Authority, four-oh-one East Twenty-first Street, Hibbing, in the C-two general commercial district and the Hibbing City Quote of Ordinance on the subject properties, four-oh-eight East Howard, four-oh-ten East Howard, four-twelve East Howard, and four-sixteen East Howard. Staff report.
Chair, I, um, there is no staff report, um, that's, that's E. Olivanti, community developer, that's, uh, here to explain the situation.
Yes, so in, in this stead, um, the Hibbing Economic Development Authority has recently entered into a contract for deed for the four-oh-eight, four-ten, and four-twelve East Howard Street, and a purchase agreement for four-sixteen East Howard Street. I'm here tonight to request that the Planning Commission find that the acquisition of these parcels is in alignment with the comprehensive and strategic plans. So in the two thousand and eighteen City of Hibbing Comprehensive Plan, the community vision statement refers to the revitalization of the downtown area as a reason that visitors are attracted to the community. The full vision statement is available for you to look at on page twenty-seven, and it's in your packet tonight. Additionally, the comprehensive plan identified goal number one for the built environment section to ensure adequate and affordable housing is available for all residents and potential new residents, which is on page sixty-nine of the two thousand and eighteen Comprehensive Plan. And we will do this by looking for mixed land use opportunities to increase residential development near the downtown area and prioritize where demolition and rehabilitation, particularly in aging buildings, are available. Finally, goal number one of the economic environment sections to support existing businesses on page eighty-four of the comp plan includes the promotion of mixed-use development in the downtown area to ensure a healthy balance of residential, commercial, leisure, and social assets exist. Five years later, in two thousand and twenty-three, the City of Hibbing undertook a strategic planning process. As part of that work, six high-priority goals were determined to be worthy of focus for the next two years. High-priority goal number two is to implement a plan and program to revitalize Howard Street. So current implementation active initiatives underway then for those two items are the Downtown Commercial Redevelopment Program, which was developed by the EDA in the summer of two thousand and twenty-three. They developed this program to focus on investing in the buildings on Howard Street to spur this... They developed this program to focus on investing in the buildings on Howard Street to spur this revitalization. The program was developed due to a building survey that determined of the hundred and fifty-two structures. In the Howard Street and First Avenue corridors, seventy-two or forty-seven percent were substandard or dilapidated. The H I D A board determined that investment at this juncture in buildings worthy of, worthy of rehabilitation. Would halt further deterioration of the downtown district. Second, in August of two thousand twenty-three, the city council created a redevelopment fund for the four hundred block of Howard Street. And referred the project to the E D A board for facilitation. Since that time, the E D A board has hired Streeter consultant, consulting to facilitate the project. Completed a title review and survey, completed environmental and geotech investigation. Conducted a building study to determine the buildings are too dilapidated to be rehabbed. Obtained demolition estimates and assessed the potential. To use tax increment financing and other sources to cover a portion of the expenses incurred by this project. Thus, the purchase of these four parcels to secure site control. For the redevelopment purposes is supported by both the two thousand eighteen Comprehensive Plan. And the two thousand twenty-three Strategic Plans for the City of Hibbing. Further, the city council and the E D A board have both taken action to ensure resources are available for this purpose. This next step includes purchasing these four parcels to facilitate the redevelopment of this area. And thus reflects the alignment with the city's comprehensive plan and strategic plans. So tonight, I'm asking for your approval. That the acquisition of these four parcels is in alignment with the city's comp plan and strategic plans. And I'm happy to answer any questions commission members may have at this time, thank you.
Thank you.
Have one, the intent is to tear these buildings down then because all of them are in. Poor enough condition, they're not worth saving?
Commissioner Smith, yes, we had L H B architects come in and perform a building study on all of these properties. Um, and at this time, the, um, four ten, four twelve, which is a contiguous building, but two separate parcels. And the four sixteen are all considered dilapidated and unable to be rehabbed.
Okay.
I have another question, um. Obviously, that, the, the four twelve, the four ten, that was a private property owned by a certain, is that back to the city then? Um, you know, that was the four twelve bar and, you know, and then obviously the, I think it was the flower basket thing, you know, he owned that building too.
Commissioner Petranzolo, yes, we have secured the site control of those properties through a contract for deed with the private owner at this time.
Owner, okay.
Yes, and that was approved at the July fifteenth E D A board meeting.
Okay.
The four oh eight property, is that an empty lot?
Um, Commissioner, yes, it is.
So basically, if, if the properties are taken down, you're gonna level it off, I would presume. And then try to find a developer or somebody to come in, do something at those buildings or. Or is it gonna be hosing, or is it gonna be a mixture of hosing and try to be, is that what you're, is that your goal, I guess I'm asking? I mean, I know it could be, it could be long, long term, but I'm asking, is that, you know, instead of. You know, obviously, the Ace Building has been a problem for years, you know. And then obviously, you know, since four twelve burnt, there's been, you know, it's been a big hole in the middle of the town. So, but, so that, is that your goal then?
Commissioners, yes, so we have been working with, um, building official Pat Green to, um, secure that site. Uh, of the Ace Hardware Building, there were some parapets that were, um, causing some concern. And so we worked with the building official to go up there and, uh, remove some bricks and things that would be a problem. Um, there was also the situation where that fire escape was able to be accessed by folks walking by. So he worked with a contractor to secure that as well, so folks can't get into this building or on top of it, those sorts of things. So, once we, uh, do site control or secure the sites. We're applying to Minnesota Department of Employment and Economic Development. For some funds to demolish these buildings, along with the I triple R. The funds then that we expend from the city's perspective would be our investment into that. We have done what's called an interfund loan to, um, allow the E D A to expend funds towards that. And then recoup them with a tax increment financing package, which we would work with, um. Our, um, bond counsel to, to run those numbers and things. That would come if we secure a developer within three years of demolition. So, we've been talking to some folks that have some ideas around those lots, I don't have anything definite at this point. But the intention would be to stay with the current zoning, which is commercial, mixed use. Which means commercial on the main floor and then housing above. Because our zoning permits, um, Pat, is it sixty-five feet? Um, vertical?
Yeah.
Or, or something in keeping with what the Android height is, that, you know, there's a maximum that we can, that we can do. Um, but yes, the intent then would be to secure a developer that would do commercial on the first floor and then residential above. So, in keeping with the current zoning and the current look and feel.
Sixty feet high.
Sixty, yep, because that is part of our historic district, so it has to be built in keeping with the historic district and the historic nature.
Well, I mean, the historic meant brick only, and we've ma- we've made a couple of adjustments to that.
Right, but.
Couple of buildings, I mean, not, so I mean, I wouldn't want to say, you tell a, uh, a developer coming in, well, it's gotta be all brick or you can't do it or something. Because we've already taken care of some of those issues. I mean, I, that, I, I really, I mean, obviously, like I said, this is long, long term, you know, we're not. This isn't gonna happen in the next year or two or three probably, but I mean, as far as you're getting cleaned up and everything, that's gonna be a big, big start there. There's no question about it.
Correct, so the, the intent would be to be in keeping with the look and feel of the historic district. But we would work with our building official and you all to, you know, utilize more, um, modern materials to. Make it look in keeping, but we wouldn't be putting up just, you know, something with, say, vinyl siding or some such that doesn't. Sort of mimic the look and feel of our current downtown. Because the vision statement that we talked about in the two thousand eighteen comp plan talks about the historic nature of that downtown. So, you know, we'll work with a developer to make sure that, and, and come back with. To talk with you folks about what that looks like and how that proceeds forward.
Yeah, and as far as like, I mean, I've tr- traveled some because of my, my job when I was with Minnesota Hockey, we went to certain towns like. Stillwater, there's a, there's an example of a town that has kind of stayed that way. You know, with different type of things that they have, but yet, you know, they, they have adjusted a little bit to, you know, somebody. It could be a, a wooden, I mean, I say totally wood, but you know, they do partial brick and then went up to wood and. Things like that, so I mean, uh, that's just one example of, you know, and I think Hibbing could be. And it would be nice to get, you know, more businesses downtown or, you know, even, like you said, e- even people living downtown. That will bring a lot of things there, so.
Yeah, yeah, so the intention is to work with, um, our building official to make sure that it's in keeping and then come and talk to you folks as we move this process along. To keep you both informed and, and, um, work through the zoning process and things, so that we're doing the, the steps as appropriate.
Any other comments or questions?
No.
Pat, did you have anything to add on this at all or not? Did you have anything to add on this at all, thoughts?
No.
Okay. My thought is, I mean, this should be good, the buildings are definitely in disrepair, that area is.
There's no question about it.
Cleaning up, I mean, if nothing else, it's gonna.
We haven't phoned a developer that wanted to clean it up, I can tell you that.
Get rid of some.
Cause I was on the downtown retail commission for many years and we tried and tried and.
Since there's no finding a fact.
Soon as they looked at it, then, nah, I don't think so, you know.
But since there's no finding a fact on this one, I would go ahead and motion.
Well, how do you want to state the, that we go on record supporting this?
Yes.
Is that your motion?
Yep.
Okay.
Commissioners, the, the, the motion needs to read that the acquisition of the four parcels is in alignment with the comp plan and the strategic plan.
Well, then, I would like to. Where do we see that?
It's on page three of my staff report that I.
On motion that they are in alignment with the city's comprehensive and strategic.
With only one condition, get it flat.
And redevelop.
Yeah, and redevelop, right.
I'll second that motion. We have a motion and second, is there any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried.
Excellent, thank you.
Uh, next up is open discussion. Open discussion. Seeing none, I'll move for adjournment.
What second?
And motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion approved. He names adjourn.
Give us about two minutes, we'll change over to the. Board of Adjustments and Appeals once.
We're good.
Cameras.
Okay. We're good to go, I guess.
No intro?
Nope.
Already, alright. Okay, we're ready to, Board of Adjustments and Appeals for Monday, July twenty-second, twenty twenty-four, five P M. Um, call of order.
Chairperson Bogacznik?
Here.
Commissioner Smith?
Here.
Commissioner Petranzolo?
Here.
Commissioner Corholios?
Here.
And let it be known that Pat Green, Tina Glad and that's the old Levante are also in attendance. First thing is, uh, approval of minutes, approve of the Board of Adjustments, Appeals, minutes for May thirteenth, twenty twenty-four, note corrections, additions or deletions if any.
I'll move for approval.
I'll second.
We have approval and a second, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, acceptance of the agenda, acceptance of the agenda for recording purposes, no additions, deletions or changes if any. State of the commission.
I would make a motion to accept.
I'll second that.
Motion and second, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Number four, new business, convene the public hearing scheduled for this time to consider variance request for Eric Fleisch. One one five Hermertite Street, Hibbing, Minnesota, five five seven four six, to bury the side yard setback from twenty feet to ten feet. And for the rear setback of thirty to ten feet for the construction of two mini storage buildings. Also additional commercial building in the C three highway service commission district. And the Hibbing City Code Con- Code of Ordinances on the subject property of. Twelve two sixty-six Old Highway one sixty-nine, Hibbing, Minnesota. We have the applicant, please come, please, your staff, staff report.
Chair, uh, the applicant is, as you said, is requesting a variance. To the side yard and rear yard setback in, uh, C three zoning district. Side yard setback required is minimum of twenty feet, applicant requesting ten. Rear yard setback is a minimum of thirty feet and the applicant is requesting ten feet. Requesting this so they can eventually construct five storage buildings on this property and have enough room between the buildings. For driving and unloading into the rented units. This appli- application would include a variance to the rear setback of ten feet for all five buildings. And a side yard setback of ten feet for the last building to the west property line. For the second phase of this project. This would not alter the character of the neighborhood and would not cause a safety issue. Um, one is that we're trying to approve a setback for future buildings. You know, that's, things happen, it may, things do go through, something may come up. Um, I don't know. If, once, once you approve a variance, it's, it's good. You can put a condition on something that would be future.
Like if you was to sell the property? Could we do, put something on, could we put a condition that if the property got sold, then they would have to come back to us? I mean, I mean, the setbacks, I mean.
This variance would be for this property owner, if it's not done and it's.
Not down, right.
It would have to come back.
And could we, I mean, if we're talking future. Going into the future, I mean, who knows what's gonna happen to, you know, and, um. That, it just sounds to me, that's.
Well, I mean, they do have a development plan.
Yeah.
Like, and the applicants in, in the audience, you, they'll be able to explain that better.
Well, definitely have a question.
That was just one, one thing, if, like, that's a very good reason, if it's sold before the fifth building's built, that person should come back.
Okay, that's what I wanted to.
Variance is, don't go with the property if they have.
Right, that's what I'm asking. If the property is go with the owner.
Right. That's it.
Commissioner, you said you had a question?
No, no, no.
Okay. Okay, can we have the applicant, please step forward? Please state your name, record and address for the address, for the record.
Derek Fleishy, one fifteen Hermertite Street, Hibbing.
Introduce your wife, please.
I'll introduce myself, my name is Nina Fleishy, name Rosman.
Can you, uh, give us a brief description of what you're trying to do for the record for everybody here?
Well, what we're trying to do is, we're, uh, trying to, uh, build, uh, five storage units on a one point two acre property. Um, our plan is, is in two phases, our first phase is, we're gonna build the two storage units with the commercial building. That she'll be doing photography in and, and whatnot, um. Second phase is, and the only reason we're doing a second phase is, we're not sure what the community's gonna want, right? We're, I'm doing what I think is right, I'm gonna do ten by tens and ten by twenties. Now, the community might come back and say, hey, God, it would've been great if you got five by eights. It would've been great if you had, you know, ten by thirties, that would really accommodate us. And that's what we're shooting for, for the next two buildings, you know, it's kind of, I, I don't know enough about this to go, well. This is what the community needs and this is what I'm gonna do, I'm leaving that open in phase two. We, we have the funding to do it all right now, but I want it for the community. Uh, it's not just for me, it's for what the community needs, you know, if the community needs fi- a bunch of five by eights. That's what's gonna be built in phase two. So, th- that's kind of what we're doing.
As you can see, I'm the mold. Um, questions, um, that building that's there, okay, that used to be a gas station, are there, are there tanks in the ground there?
There was tanks, they've been removed, we have the.
They have been removed? Okay.
Yeah.
That was one question I was gonna.
Right.
And second of all, you've been doing a lot of excavating out there, it looks like it's, you know, I, I did go out there, you know? And are you, have you pushed it back to as far as your property goes already?
No.
You haven't went that deep yet?
Uh, w- we're, we don't want to get too close to our pro- our property lines, you know?
Yeah.
Um, in respect for our neighbors, right, so we're, we're taking it close, but. We're not gonna put right on the money, you know, yet, because with the ten foot variance, we're gonna be fine, because we've already cut it down about two. Uh, a little bit less than two and a half feet and we're adding, I've already talked to Shane Sons and we're gonna bring in two and a half plus, uh, material to build that up on there. Um, so what you see right now, it's gonna be right back brought up to level.
Say that again, you're, it's gonna get higher than what it is now, are you?
So, current, um, so right now, we've removed two and a half feet roughly of, of clay.
Okay.
But we're bringing a class five, we're gonna bring that basically right up to it, plus some for the, uh, uh, footings and for this lab.
Yeah, okay, alright, uh, and another, another question, uh, is there. I mean, it looks kind of s- like swamp back there, I mean, in the back, is it, I, I didn't go into the property, of course.
Are you talking about the south side or are you talking about the west side?
Is there, is there a wetlands issue there, uh, Pat?
I haven't looked at it.
I mean, I don't care, I mean, I just, I just thought maybe because of the fact.
We had our survey done and that was never like something that came up as an issue within that property.
Okay, yeah, I mean, I, I don't want you guys to get in trouble, you know, it's gonna happen, if somebody. All of a sudden says, oh, you know, they started pushing this back and, you know, and it is a wetlands issue and they, it, it could end up being some problem for you. We're trying to avoid that issue for you, you know, that's kind of like what our job is too, you know, so that you can have a clean property. We're trying to avoid that issue for you, you know, that's kinda like what our job is too, you know, so that you can have a clean property title and every, I'm not, I'm not pushing it by any means, yeah, I'm just wanting to make sure that you guys know about it a little bit, so, but anyhow, um, yeah, I, um, obviously, I mean, it, it, you got a lot of, you got a lot of space back there, that's for sure, I mean, so, are you saying because of the fact that you want it to be closer so you can add more buildings, which will get you more units in it? Is, is what it amounts to then, right? Eventually, you're starting off with the two, I understand it, future-wise, you're gonna add three more, of your, that's your goal, obviously, right? And by, if we didn't approve your setback, would, you, you would lose some units then, right?
We do lose a ton, right, cuz you're losing twenty feet on each building.
Okay.
Can I add a little bit of context?
What's that?
Can I add a little bit of context as to what we're doing? Um, I know that the building on our plan, as far as my studio goes, is minor in comparison to these, but we're doing something unique and trying to have two businesses within this lot. Um, I've ran business in town for ten years, I started small renting in the mall, I'm at a clothing shop, and then I was downtown, and then I was by Caribou, I closed during COVID, um, so I've always, as I've ran my business in town, I've wanted to plant roots somewhere where I'm not renting. Um, so what we're doing in addition to these units in this small studio that I'll have, my hope is, I already have a very established client base where people are coming from all over the range for their photography, and I know that that helps economically too, when people come into town with their family, um, so we're trying to create space for that studio, and then these buildings also.
How big is that building gonna be?
Twenty by thirty.
What's that?
Twenty by thirty.
That's a twenty by thirty.
No, that's a twenty by thirty one, okay, I didn't look, I looked before, but, okay.
And that's why with all of these different buildings, we have to accommodate for driving space, for accessibility, for safety, um, for easy access, so that alone eats up a significant amount of space, and we want to do something sustainable, um, given that, like I said, I've, on a smaller scale, ran business in town for ten years, we want our families here, our kids go to school here, we wanna build a business that is gonna sustain.
I think I'm done.
One question for that.
As far as the commercial part of that, the twenty by thirty building that they're using, the old driveway that's between us already, would that work for their parking spaces that they're they need for the building?
For that, twenty by thirty, yeah.
Yeah, cuz they would be required to have a certain amount of parking for that.
For the type of use.
Yeah, so.
And the other, the other thing that came up earlier, as far as future, simplest thing would be two buildings, no, correct, come in for a third or a fourth.
Technically, three with hers.
Yep, then you just come for variance for those future ones.
Okay.
So you're saying they should actually do it?
You know, that would be the simplest legal, legal way of doing it. Variance is only good for six mo- six months by statute. The problem there is if, if you do one for the other three, they don't start, it's no good anyway.
Right.
It'd be better for you.
I wasn't facing, sorry, but I. He, he's just gonna, we're going, we're going to approve for the two buildings, right? And the future ones, we're not going to approve?
Three buildings.
Three buildings.
The office.
Oh, the office.
The full.
Studio two, right, or studio.
And then when they start construction.
Yeah, and the two building, and the.
In the future.
That way, they don't, if they don't get the other ones going on time, if their time expires, they'd have to come back anyways, so.
Right. So, but, w- the two buildings are gonna need the setback.
All the buildings.
All the buildings.
Cuz you got a side setback on the op- the photograph one also, on the east side there.
Alright, thank you.
Nothing for me. Thank you guys very much.
Thanks for, we can use sit down, we may call you back up.
Alright, thank you.
Okay, is there anybody else that'd like to speak for or against this?
Okay, there you go. I don't know if you're gonna be able to hear me from down here. Uh, I own the property next door, Dave Sales and Service.
Right.
Uh, I don't have any problem with him building, or he wants to build and so forth, except I don't like the setbacks. Because, uh, in the future, if I wanna build or somebody that owns a property, uh, commissioner decides, uh, the same setback for me, ten foot, is too close to the buildings, then I'm losing building space on my property.
Do you own that land back there, Dave?
Are me.
Do you own the land behind that?
Uh.
On the side, I missed, yeah.
I own the land behind, I own the land to the east side of it.
To the east side?
Yep.
But not to the, not.
Are me.
Not to the west side behind where, where I'm supposed to.
Not on the west side, just on the east side.
Yeah, okay.
I know when I built there, I had to be thirty-five feet off the sideline and fifty feet off the back. Joe was saying, now they changed that from twenty, from those dimensions down to twenty feet. Now he wants, we're on ten feet, I think it's a little bit too close.
Uh, question I would have, I guess, is, I wonder what's happening back there?
I think that they're.
Dave, you do own that? Oh, Dave, okay. Oh, you have somebody else, yeah, sorry.
Got somebody else.
Sorry. Obviously, they're, Dave.
Yep.
Alright.
Dave's got any more questions for Dave?
Uh, no.
Alright, thank you, Dave.
Thanks, Dave, I think we're fine.
If anyone.
Is there anybody else that'd like to speak for or against? Just please come forward, state your name for the record and address.
Great, I got a plugged head, so. Um, my name is Chris Thompson, I live at thirty-eight twenty-six South Pentheart Road.
This is my wife, Sue, I'm Sue Thompson.
Okay.
And, uh, we own the property that would be on the south side of property that they're asking for variance for.
Okay.
And, um, it would be on the north side of our property, and, and like, I think Dave said, I didn't hear him, but, uh, I think, you know, I don't have a problem with the structures, anything like that, it's just the only problem that I have is, is if he's gonna be up ten feet within my property line, am I gonna lose the use of that property that is immediately adjacent to it? You know, like, if I wanna run a fence line in the future and that, uh, whatever.
Um, yeah, I know what you mean, a fence can go right to prob- right on the property line with, with.
That's what I assumed, but.
So you won't lose any.
I made assumptions before that were incorrect, so.
Yep.
But as far as like, uh, any kind of a, if, you know, I have no plans on building a structure, you know, but, um, you know, I, I don't know for future, you know, what that could in, if that could be a problem, if there's anything that, like I said, if I lose another twenty feet of property that I can't do anything with, or I'm gonna have to setback another twenty feet over and above what the normal statute says, that would be.
It wouldn't change yours.
Pardon me?
It wouldn't change yours, you would have the same site setback requirement, just like he had to begin with. If you wanted to go closer, then you'd have to come for a variance like he did, but if you're not going closer, it doesn't change anything that way.
So property line is property line?
Yes.
Correct.
And doesn't affect what setback I would normally have to.
Nope.
That's correct.
Okay, well then.
Yeah, that's.
I guess I have no problem.
We just don't know what yours owned, he's owned highway service commercial. Your pro- you know, sells it back.
I think I'm zoned agricultural, commercial agricultural, or whatever, I don't know what it is, it's.
We hate the land.
Yeah.
Yeah. I don't have that table, like, for all our different zones, so what your setback would be for a garage?
Yeah.
But that would be a a side yard I would take from to your, that, that property.
That would be quite a ways away from where my house is at.
Correct.
You know, so.
So that would probably be a side yard setback, not a rear setback.
No.
Yep.
Yeah, so, like I said, if it doesn't affect my property.
I don't think it was, that all, you know, your setback's still gonna be what it is from that property line, that ten feet has ten feet on a mini storage would not have to be fire rated, it's not too close to the property line.
Mm-hmm.
You know, and depending on certain uses, the closer you get to property lines, the higher your fire rating is, so.
Oh, okay.
So you should, you should have no problem, yeah. It shouldn't affect whatever you wanna do on your side with your setback.
Right, okay, well, like I said, that was my only concern, so if that doesn't really affect me, just you're taking up space.
Hey. Dave's got any other questions?
Uh, no.
Derek, do you mind coming back up to the stand, please?
I do.
So the east building you're looking at is a hundred-and-forty by twenty, is there gonna be doors on the east and west side of that building?
No, just, sorry, uh, just on the west side. The, oh, sorry, the, yeah, just on the west side, the east side will, there'll be no doors.
Okay.
So that's, and that's pointing towards the power lines, and no, I would want nobody driving around or even by the power lines, obviously, so there's not an incident, you know?
Alright, that's all I had, oh, thank you, sit down. Commissioner's got anything else?
I think we're good here.
Finding of the facts, I do believe.
We read after Pat's staff report.
Fact.
Yeah.
And it's right after the graphs.
Right after graphs.
Staff.
I got it.
Okay, finding the facts, um, number one, is it in harmony with the general purpose and intent of the zoning ordinance?
Would say.
Yeah.
I would say yes. No comment on that one, huh?
Hmm?
No, no comment on that one?
No comment.
Okay. Two, consistent with the comprehensive plan?
Yes.
Looking for good comments, I don't have any. Okay, uh, the property owner proposes to use the property in a reasonable manner, not permitted by its owning ordinance, the board agrees with the applicant's evidence, affirms with the above, yes.
Yes.
Number two, the plight of the land owner is due to the circumstances unique to the property, not created by the land owner. Board agrees with the app- applicant's evidence, affirms with the above, yes.
Yes.
And variance is granted, will be allowed. Alter the instance to the character of the locality, board agrees with the applicant's evidence, affirms with the above, yes.
Yes.
See, I'll be looking for a motion.
I'll make a motion that we approve this with. Are we putting conditions on this now, guys?
Um, no, just the, just the three buildings to start.
Just the three buildings, no, not all five.
No, at, at this time.
Just the three.
Yeah.
Okay.
Just for, I, I.
I'll make a motion then.
And I would second that motion.
Okay.
I'm sorry, Mr.
Any other discussion?
Don't we vote?
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The best. Okay, under the next one.
Oh, and because this is adjustment and appeals, they do not have to.
Correct.
Correct.
Yep, alright.
Correct, but any, uh, anybody can appeal it to the council within fifteen days if they're against this.
Okay.
Um, that should be noted.
They can appeal to the council within fifteen days if you are against.
Just a letter to the.
By a letter to the.
By a letter to the Hiving City.
The council secretary.
Okay, alright. Back to number four, section B, convene a public hearing to schedule at this time to consider a variance request of Kim A, twenty-seven oh-six, Third Avenue East, Hiving, Minnesota, five-five-seven-four-six, to the variance of maximum lot coverage from twelve fifty square feet to one-thousand-six-hundred-and-twenty square feet for the construction of a new single-family dwelling with attached garage in the R-two, one-to-four-family residence district in the Hiving City Code ordinances on the subject property of twenty-seven oh-six, Third Avenue East, Hiving, Minnesota. The applicant, staff report?
Chair, the applicant is requesting a variance of the maximum lot coverage allowed for buildings. The applicant is proposing to build a twenty-one foot by fifty-foot house and garage on the rear property. The reason for this, her daughter will be moving into the existing house on the property, and the applicant will live in the new home, uh, on the rear of the property. The lot coverage will be increased from twelve fifty square feet to covering sixteen-hundred-and-twenty square feet of lot area. The property is zone R-two, one-to-four family, so the property is zoned correctly to have more than one dwelling. The hardship is the lot she owns is twenty-five feet by a hundred-and-twenty-five feet, and she will still need a garage attached to the new dwelling. The character of this neighborhood is a mixture of single-family dwellings and rental buildings, duplexes, or rental garage apartments. The applicant is applying for a variance to setbacks for this project also, which we would hear. Uh, no conditions at this time on lot coverage. So you're looking at the hardship of that lot size and how much would be covered?
Is the applicant here? Is the applicant here, could they please step forward?
I'm Kim Hi, twenty-seven oh-six, Third Avenue East, Hiving, Minnesota.
Tell us a little bit about what you're trying to do.
Um, I purchased this home in two thousand and nineteen, uh, it was in a former tax forfeited property with that program that no longer exists. I patiently worked and took five and a half tons of plaster and lath out, um, would, it had no plumbing, no access to the attic, replaced balsam wool insulation, and brought the whole inside into a whole new living space. Um, over the course of the next year and a half, I had physical and some mental health issues and was able to be on disability. The home is paid for. A year ago, my daughter and grandson, and a part-time grandson have moved in. I have a PCA, personal care assistant, of thirty-one and a half hours a week, and, uh, rather than moving into an apartment, I wanted to create a small space for me on my own property, since I need a garage anyways. I'm fully flexible with whatever I can do to make it all happen.
Any questions, the commission?
Has any, has anybody went up?
I did.
At this party, I did too.
Yeah.
I'm a little confused about, oh, a twenty-five foot lot. Your house, okay, and then, uh, there's that garage on the corner, alright, is there, what, what's on it?
That's the neighbor's property.
That's the neighbor's?
Yeah, mine is just the house.
The neighbors are like, that's right, cuz that house is like this, and your garage is like this.
I currently have a twenty-foot. Yeah.
Okay, alright. Right, the door is on a third avenue.
Right, yep.
Yes.
Ah, excuse me, yeah, wait, okay.
Alright.
Any other comments or questions, all the commission?
Not for her.
Alright, thank you, sit down, we may call you back up. Anybody else wanna speak for or against this?
On this property is she just got a gas line.
Just, wait, wait.
Wait till you get up here, guys.
Please state your name, record.
Hi, I'm Ronald Tresmer, and my wife is Joyce.
What is your address, sir?
What's that?
What is your address?
Twenty-seven oh-two and a half, Third Avenue East. We own a double lot on the corner. Twenty-seven oh two and a half, Third Avenue East, we own a double lot on the corner. This is our property, right here. And basically, we'd be getting pinched off, but that's not even a big deal. The, she has a gas line right down the center of that, and it's gotta be relocated. And I was gonna ask if they could relocate that on the south side of that, 'cause we're putting in a security fence. And if you okay her variation, there will only be two feet between her building and our fence. And then on the other part of it, uh, getting gutters on the roof, her yard is built high. Ours is lower and it'll flood to our basement, we have a leak in our basement already. And, and then the other part was, uh, I don't have my notes with me. Well, my other neighbors too were supposed to show up, they had different issues, but, sorry, I have trouble talking. But, and I've talked to Pat about this too, but like I said, we're gonna be, uh, really pinched in there. They're cutting all back of our house off with that. And Pat did help me lay out our yard, and we followed every rule there is, right down to five feet. We have a fence coming probably this week, coming around the back, so. It's not like, uh, no grievance against it, I mean, I don't like having to be cut off, but. I wanted some of those stipulations, so our house don't suffer and we don't have to pay money because of this. Cause we do have a leak in our basement on this corner right here, and then over on this side also. So a heavy rain, it leaks here, if her rain goes down, it's gonna go down into ours, lower property, and flood our basement.
So you're saying with another structure back there, there's gonna be?
Right.
Yeah. Kick it around the roof and you're worried about it coming into your property then?
Exactly. It's something could be worked around, so.
Yeah.
So, um, excuse me, sir, did you recently, you, you yourself recently just built a garage not that long ago, right?
What's that?
You yourself just recently built a garage not that long ago on the corner?
Yeah, nineteen, twenty nineteen.
And you followed all the setbacks, you think any variances?
Yep.
Okay.
He helped me with, uh, all these structures, and the fence we're doing too. I rely on him, 'cause he knows the rules.
You had a larger lot though, also, Ron.
Yeah, we have a double lot.
Anything else?
I know that's gonna really chew it up in the back there, that's a lot of space to use though. And I do have one more request, if, if on this, and this would be up to her, but. Right now, if I look out my dining room window, it looks right into her camper window, she's standing in. And I'd like to request that we shift her window back, so we could at least look out her window, so she don't think we're looking at her. Would that be already?
Is that a thing? Not our purview, that's not our purview, sir.
There was an issue, because I cannot have anything on my property without being on his cameras. And, um, there is nothing I can do about it, and, um, no, I'm not changing or moving anything on my property. I'm trying to make improvements.
You can't build with the gas line.
The city with the gas line in it, that could be figured out, I was planning on leveling it, I've little by little been doing it, so like my garbage doesn't fall off the little hill. All of that is stuff that is handled, once I know what size I can build, then all of that can be addressed.
And another thing, I don't watch her on the cameras, that's something her, her mom and her therapist give me a bit.
Okay, that's, alright, that's not.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Pat, according to this, I'm looking here, she wants to build a twenty-one by fifty building with a, uh, two foot on each side on a twenty-five foot lot?
Right, with five.
What about the overhang, because isn't the overhang?
So that would come up, I mean, right now, if, if you approve the maximum lot coverage. That, let's just say, you build a garage on a small lot, a lot of times they, they have to be, um. You try to make a two-stall garage, Brooklyn area, anybody with twenty-five or thirty-seven foot lot. So, yeah, one, one without, one variance without the other, you know, cancels them all, correct? So, the house, um, all the projections and that would come into effect under, when we listen to what? On a setback of the building to the property line, which I have some new information also on.
Okay.
On that hearing.
Okay.
So you're looking at maximum lot coverage as a hardship, even to build a garage, you know, a two-stall garage might, you might be skinny. And you can put one in front of the other, or, you know, but.
So right now, basically, we're just actually approving the size, and then we'll take the rest up onto the other.
Correct.
Okay, I'm fine with that.
If the setback variance doesn't go, the maximum lot coverage probably would be ca- cause you can only cover that much with that certain setback.
Right, so this is not our, okay.
I mean, I went down that alley too, just to kinda go down it.
I live near there.
Only two feet from that alley, I mean, that alley is small, I mean, you get one car down that alley.
It's five feet.
It's five feet from the alley.
Okay, I'm sorry, five feet, it's, it, that alley is small back there, you know?
That's, that's the setback from the alley, though, she's meeting, she's meeting the setback from the alley.
Setback?
Yep.
That's if we. Five feet from property line, so the alley itself isn't the property line. Well, I, I understood that, yeah. It seems like it's tight down there. The rear would be met, that setback.
My issue is more with the two feet.
Okay, I don't see anybody else here to speak for or against it, I'll close the public hearing part of it. Alright, name or comments for commissioners?
I'll make a motion that we approve up to that size, so she can have that much lot coverage, and then. Obviously, the rest is in the next part of this, so.
Okay, I would second.
Okay, motion, second.
I think you have two findings of fact.
Findings of facts. So finding the facts in harmony with the general purpose and intent of the zoning ordinance, say yes.
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 Consistent with the comprehensive plan of the alley or neighborhood, yes. Cause they're all twenty-five foot lots. Uh, property owner proposes to use of the property in a reasonable manner, but permitted by the zoning ordinance, the board agrees with the applicant evidence, affirms the above. It'd be a yes.
It has to be a yes.
Number two, the plight of the landowner is due to the circumstances unique to the property, not created by the landowner, the board agrees with the applicant. Evidence affirms in the above, and definitely, no. Um, the variance is granted, will not alter the essential characteristics of locality, the board agrees with the applicant evidence. The above, it'd be a yes. Alright, now I'm looking for a motion.
Okay, I'll ma- make that motion to allow up to the sixteen hundred and twenty feet.
I second.
Sixteen twenty? I have a motion, a second, the sixteen twenty square feet. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. It passes, okay, now for the second part of that. Convene a public hearing scheduled at this time to consider a variance request, Kim Heine for twenty-seven oh six, Third Avenue East, Hibbing, Minnesota. To vary the side yard setbacks from five feet to two feet for the construction of a new single-family dwelling with attached garage. In the R-two, one-to-four family residence district in the Hibbing. Hibbing City Code ordinances on the subject property of twenty-seven oh six, Third Avenue East, Hibbing, Minnesota. Five-five-seven-four-six, lot three, block seventeen, Koskyville. Staff report?
The applicant, in this case, is requesting a variance to the side yard setback of five feet. Um, to a two, two-foot setback on both side property lines. Um, I'll stop here, uh, I went over with, when Kim came in, I went over, uh. Ratings with her on the walls, et cetera, when you get too close to property lines. Uh, one item I missed, and I explained it to her tonight, was openings, which are windows. You cannot be less than three feet from a property line. And then you can have twenty-five, twenty-five percent of your wall coverage can be opening. So she agreed that it would be a minimum three-foot setback on each side. So that, that would be less lot coverage for one, but the setback will be further. Um, the, the walls would still be rated, um, but you have to have, have any kind of opening on each side. Has to be three feet. So it'd be, to allow three-foot setback on both side property lines instead of five. The reason is the applicant has a twenty-five foot wi- wide lot and is proposing a twenty-one foot wide house, so that would. Change to eighteen or nineteen, normally, you don't go odd sizes, so eighteen is our minimum width for a building anyway. And she would, her plans would change to that. The structure width would only be allowed to fit on the property with a three-foot setback. Could go eighteen or nineteen feet wide on the house, the hardship would be the existing lot size is only twenty-five feet wide. Character of this neighborhood, again, is a mixture of single-family dwellings and rental buildings. Conditions required would be, I would say, uh, and you would probably bring it up anyway, it would be the gutter. Thing, because the roofline, the existing houses, you can see where, to the south and her house, how close those are. Back when those were originally built. I would suggest gutters and downspouts turn not to the pro- property owner next, but to the alley or street. I'll turn it back to you, here.
Um, Pat, question for you, I know a lot of these older homes like, uh, Brooklyn or Kedish. In this neighborhood, a lot of them twenty-five foot lots, some of them hos- houses back then were built a lot closer together.
Yeah.
Did the variances or zoning change over the years, where a lot of that changed? Kind of?
Zoning didn't start actually in the city of Hibbing nineteen, let's see, the building code was nineteen seventy-seven. So zoning, I don't know exactly when that, but it changes. Not quite often, but I would say, especially with other developments going on. The zoning would change for that development.
Okay.
Well, most of these old towns were, look, looked like you could build within a foot of any property line and, yep, your, your roof lines almost touch.
Yep.
Yep.
Cause I know there's a lot of houses in Hibbing that are like that.
Yeah.
Alright, okay. Do any of the applicants come back for it or not?
No, Pat, you spoke to her.
Both of them.
So it's three feet now?
Correct.
Yeah? And you agree?
You'll, you'll call her, you can call her up to verify, yeah, what are the questions on the actual building itself.
So you, Pat spoke with you, and you're okay with it being three, three feet?
Absolutely, the main thing is getting it, getting it level, getting some of the problems. They dug a hole in the ground in nineteen hundred, it didn't even have a cement floor till the forties. My house was one of the first things there, I just want it to be better and not make things worse for the neighbors.
Kim, I have a question for you.
Mm-hmm.
Um, is this gonna be a stick-built, um, the, the home in the back part that you're gonna be living in? Is that? You're, you're building another property bet on that property, so is, I mean, who's, who's building it?
Uh, Jeff with, I can't remember the name of, um, begins with an M, um, I'm working with him, Iron Range. Already has the plants, the plumbing, Yoder's already has the materials.
Prefab homer?
No.
No, that's not that.
No, no.
It's not like modular. Okay, that, that's, okay, so obviously must be, so, and are you gonna, you're not gonna have a basement in it?
No.
No, you're just be putting on a slab, right?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
My winters will be in Arizona, it's, it's a new way of living for me.
Okay.
Any other comments or questions, commission? Anybody else wanna speak for or against this? Okay. We gotta go to the finding of the facts? Could be the last page, I think. Finding the facts, is requested variance of permit use, conditional or intermittent use on the subject property zoning district. Yes, in harmony with the general purpose and intent of the zoning ordinance.
Yes.
A yes, consistent with the comprehensive plan. Yes. Uh, number one, the property owner proposes to use the property in a reasonable manner, not permitted by the zoning ordinance. The board agrees, applicant evidence affirms the above, yes. The plight of the landowner is due to the circumstances unique to the property, not created by the landowner. Board agrees with the applicant's evidence and affirms the above, yes. The variance is granted, it will not alter the essence characteristics of the locality, and the board agrees, applicant's evidence affirms the above. Yes. Any other discussion?
I can make a motion to approve, but I also feel that we have to make sure that, um, with the gutters. You know, that making sure that the water will not go on, um, to their, but I guess it would have to run down the alley, I guess, I don't know. You know, they're always can do that, but yeah.
To make the condition with the gutters directed to the alley.
It will go down, you know, it won't go on to either side of the properties, I would make a condition that it has to have gutters that will.
That are directed.
Direct the water towards the alley.
Fifty feet's a pretty long ways, though, to run it all one direction, so if you're also running to the west.
Well, you got, you also.
She runs it there, she can actually have them put it, so it goes around and then goes to the south. If you're draining both ends of the gutter.
Yeah.
On the, it'd be the west end, you just gotta have your downspout come down and then go to, around the corner, so it's drained to the south. Point it that way, you see what I'm saying?
Not really, because.
Just.
Cause of the volume of water.
Right.
In the gutter, if you only have one on one end, you may have.
Well, maybe you're gonna have them on both ends of the.
Right, so the one on the west end.
West end, yeah.
Pat, the downspout has to go down and go, has been an extension going to the south, so it doesn't just stop there and drain.
No, right, yeah, no.
So everybody knows that that, that's the intent, is to drain it that way.
Right, but the houses, the house would be going, uh, east and west, right? Cause that's, that, that's how that works right there, I mean, the front of her house is facing, uh, west right now. You know, and so when it go, how, how do you think it's gonna go south, I don't understand, or that's.
With this gutter here.
Yeah.
On this end, your downspout, you have it come around the corner and point that.
Actually, what I would do is.
Well, you could do that too.
Yeah.
All we gotta do is just.
Yeah, either way would work, just so it's not.
That would work better, wouldn't it?
The condition is that he, I think that he's getting. The condition is that I think that he's getting at is that the gutters aren't- When it's raining, the water is not gonna drain onto someone else's property.
Right, that's what I'm looking at.
And that's- I don't care how they- I don't care how they run the gutters, how it does, as long as it's not going onto somebody else's property.
Yeah, I mean, the other side too.
Either to the alley or the street.
Right.
So I have a-
Yeah, I mean, you know.
I have something to- I have a little bit of- a little bit of something.
Okay.
Um, so my- my thought here, for the commissioner, is, um, she said this is a new opportunity, new life for her. She's gonna spend winters in Arizona. Going forward, what that looks like when it's not her property is another, essentially, rental unit that we're putting in- in a neighborhood. That's- that's where my only hang-up is, going forward.
Say that again.
Putting-
I've had- did you have?
There are already some in there.
Yeah, there's already some.
No, yeah. We just wanted to be on, you know? I wanna look at it from every side, you know? Obviously, we know where we're at on it, I just wanted to put that on there.
Yeah.
That's all.
Well, I just wanna make sure that those people and anybody else who live in it would not have a problem with the drainage. And if it has to be under or it goes on the gutters, I don't care, but I just wanna make sure it's not gonna run on anybody else's property.
Yeah.
You know, all it gets worked out, Kim's gonna have to figure that out with her contractor. You know, you're gonna have to figure it out, Kim, with your contractor, to make sure that you have enough gutter and, you know, enough, you know, so the water doesn't run- run any- yes. I mean, and not just them, as, you know, it's- it's for-
Yes. If I don't do something, their basement's never gonna stop leaking. So at a minimum, I need to do something to get this land more level.
Right, because you are higher than what they are, for sure, you know? So we just wanna make sure that's not gonna-
Absolutely.
Add to their problem.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, no.
The problem they have is not your problem, but we just wanna make sure it doesn't add to their problem.
I wanna take away a problem, not add one.
Oh. So anyhow, that's my condition. You got it?
Yep.
Do you just get that?
I got the motion, I didn't get a second.
I'll second it.
I'll second it.
Alright.
We got a motion, a second. Any other discussion?
That's the conditions with the gutters.
Yep, the conditions with the gutters.
Got that.
Okay.
All those in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Anything else? Anything for open discussion? You got anything? Nothing?
I'll say to adjourn.
Hold on, I got one thing. You guys got anything to discuss?
No.
Oh, okay. Um, one thing I wanna look at in the future, Pat, is how parks are zoned. And how the city parks are zoned, so we don't have- run into a problem with the, uh, Cobb Cook Coalition again, or anybody else in that matter. I'd like to look at maybe zoning the parks a certain way, so something like that doesn't happen again in the future. That's the only thing I wanna add on planning and zoning slash-
Zone.
Right. For parks.
Commissioner, if I may?
Yep.
Pat, um, with your- so I will let you know that tomorrow, or Wednesday night, at the city council meeting, they're workshopping a task force around looking at all of the parks and the Parks and Trails master plan, and the information that was contained therein, and what the next steps could potentially be.
Okay.
So there'll be some work that's done around all of the parks in the city, and then that task force will probably bring forward some next steps. But they're starting to workshop that at the city council level.
Okay.
Um, so we'll see what they decide to do to move forward with any questions around that.
Yeah, that's all I had.
Alright, I move to adjourn?
Second.
Second.
Guys, for results, please?
Okay, I had someone in the audience ask for results. I don't- I know the general public that's watching on TV can't hear that, so we'll, uh, make that note.
Results for what?
He's asking for results of our- of our- of our deal. He just wants a copy of what we decided to do.
Like a copy of the minutes?
Yeah, minutes. I don't know if we do that.
I don't know.
All the- We never have.
Yeah, we don't.
We do have all the information in the office. Anybody, if you're- you're requesting a copy, we can do that, I suppose.
Yeah, I just may- maybe mail him a- a copy of our minutes.
Well, wait a minute, I- I would think that until she starts construction, okay? And she has to come and approve the- it has to be approved by Pat, then if you wanna come up and get that, I know, I think you can- you can come and get it, because that's public knowledge. But, I mean, as far as anything before that, because we don't know yet, you know? I mean, until she brings the plans to them, now with the setback and everything going from two to three, once they start that, then you come up to city hall.
Yeah, I think he just wants a copy of what you- your motion.
No, he doesn't wanna copy. He wants a copy of what it's gonna look like, what her plans are gonna be. Yeah.
Both.
Both. He wants- oh, he wants both.
Commissioner?
The plans are- you can- the plans are hers, not anybody else's.
No, but, I mean, when you- when she starts construction, she has to have it approved.
Nope.
No, no. No, because we approved it, yeah, right?
Can look at the application and everything.
Yeah. Oh, the application, yeah.
Yeah.
That's what you could look at.
That's it?
And commissioners, there is a request for public information that any individual would have to file with our city clerk to access that data. Um, all agendas and minutes are posted on our public website, so those are readily accessible.
Yeah, there it is, right there.
Yeah.
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 Okay, we had a, uh- We had a motion to adjourn and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Aye was a long time ago.